Almost. Go ahead, please.
Paul Disorder, the Board of Trustees meeting came up. The district office on Tuesday, June 24th at 5:00 PM. We'll kind of just go around quickly and give your name and around the board so that we can.
Anna Henderson, General Manager.
Paul Bemmons, trustee.
Matt Rancourt, Finance Director.
Deb Freud and right President and Curtis Meyer is absent. We'll go down to number two, June 10th was the Board of Trustees election and welcome aboard. Bob Emmons for another five years. Thank you for the dedication. That adds on to the 10 years that he was on board prior to that. So we appreciate all your efforts. We'll go down to number three, review and approve the March, April and May meetings. Go over to the green tab and we can just go through these quickly as you like. Does anyone have any corrections or anything for March? Okay, flip over to the next one, which is April. Is there any corrections or changes for April? And then on May, because there was not. Boardman trustees that were gone, there was not a quorum. So there was not a meeting in May. So we have moved those items to take place here in chair.
I'm going to suggest we approve the minutes month by month because there are different members present at different meetings. So and for the meeting of March 25th, I'd normally approve as presented. All five members were here, so everyone can vote.
Um, thought from how it's ruled, there's more that you can vote even if you weren't. Yes.
Want to vote? You guys do want to hear?
Yes, yes, if you've reviewed the minutes, let's do exactly, but that's all right. We can take them one by one if you prefer. Okay, go ahead. So we do March.
You move, I'll second.
All in favor, say aye. If you're present, okay, history of favor.
I move the April minutes as presented.
All those to vote who were present. Bob, you were here. April?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, all right. So so moved and the May meeting.
Okay, so if we could just for the April, who's the second for that?
I'll second.
Okay.
That's all right, sorry.
Thank you, also.
Okay, and so the May.
No main meeting.
No main meeting because there was not a quorum.
No more May.
No more May.
We and I were here, but there were no minutes.
So some people.
Okay, five minutes.
All right. All right, very good. So we'll move along then. For number four. And that goes over to the yellow tab. Okay, number four, this is April and May operations reports. There are always four sections in each one of them and I'll just say, we'll just take them one at a time here on April. Look down to it. Did anyone have any section that they want to have reviewed and tell the letter if you did? Anything? Okay, all right, then we'll go down to the May. Oh, the one thing I do want to point out, at the end of that meeting, at the end of that report was was a new graph. That I really do appreciate that is has been added on our power supply where it comes from, but down at the bottom. It will, it will list, is that also in that one? Next one. In the May. Then had. Had April outage. Oh, my books took a round. No offense, math, my main math.
Training issue, babe, we're on it.
Okay, but down at the bottom of it is very nice of when there is an outage and the length of time. And how short of time when you were talking about sometimes. Some other competitors, how long it takes before to get back on it. And this is really, really nice to give a date here. A little bit of how many people are out sometimes. It is on certain. Circuits it is, but how quickly the staff has been incredibly on both months. Okay, so we'll pass that on to you. And it's a nice, nice graph. Okay, so we did the April. Now we'll look at the May operations report. Any questions on anything?
Yeah, could you explain why?
Sometimes you have something to come with it.
One A, yes, I'm happy to. So. We have the common occurrence of landlords and tenants. The landlord being owner of the property, the tenant having illegal. Ability, illegal rights to occupy. So we provide service to the tenant, but then when the tenant moves out, we need some direction from the landlord on what they would like us to do with the service. If that is disconnected and there is no power to the building or they would like a transfer to their name. We do transfer at the moment. So this would be to formalize what we're currently doing and adopting that relationship.
How will that agreement be implemented with the landlords?
We will send them a letter.
So it's one side of the data. So you're going to tell them what the district will be doing?
That know that they have the choice to have a transfer to their name and service continue or we disconnect upon the. But when their tenant moves out, the other issue that has to be addressed in landlord tenant agreement, and this is pretty standard across utility industry is if your tenant is going to have the power disconnected from on. What you would like us to do, whether let's disconnect and not transfer or disconnect and transfer. And the issue is if it's in the winter and you own a property and the tenant doesn't pay the bills, you want a rescue freezing.
So this will be a formal agreement, sign the other landlords.
And is that with each occupancy change?
No.
Would they get a new letter at first or at any point for that address?
It will be one agreement for the property until the landlord wants to modify their choice.
Okay, yeah.
How they want to.
Are there any others, any other questions on anything?
I had one on the, it's just going to be 15 customers who are non-paying. Do we have any customers, not necessarily, do we have any customers because of the heat today where they really need to have electricity?
I, this was in May. I'm sorry, I don't know how many of those have. Been reconnected or are disconnected.
Or how many do you have these payment arrangements?
For the, I don't know. But this, a lot of. Not all customers choose to enter into a payment arrangement, but those that do, they're. They they're not disconnected unless they break the payment arrangement. And then they still have notice and opportunity to to pay.
Good, thank you.
Questions on it? You have things on the operations report then for May. Same way, it's the same, the same printout, but it kind of flipped around. At least it wasn't mine yet. Okay, all right, so. So then we'll go down to number five, which is the blue tab, and that is April and May treasures report. Is that Matt or is that you?
Well, I think we're open to entertaining questions if there are any, but I I try to make significant notes in the report.
I like.
I read them.
I read them and I also liked at the beginning of highlight of which things are important and to look at closely. Any questions on anything there? Okay, that's the April report. Come over the treasures report. That is for May. You had some things there that you're pointing out, Matt. Anything else you would like to express anything on that?
There's nothing else that's kind of material for for this month.
The one that kind of jumps out to me is the assessment on the state public health utilities. You know, we tried to budget for these things and that is a pretty big jump there. And everything. So that's, that's the challenges that we are facing on that. But that is for the. It's coming down from the state. And so that's where. Any comments on that?
Well, it just, we don't have, we don't have a lot of lead time to, we certainly don't have enough lead time to budget for it. And it's, it's, they apply a factor against eligible revenues. They they define what those are and then they apply a factor against it. And so although the revenues don't. Don't change necessarily too too much year to year, the factor did. So it just increased the.
This is just dealing with efficiency maintenance.
No, no, it, it supports the operations of the PUC.
A huge jump, yes.
If I can add efficiency maintenance, something that included the order. It's in with the purple tab.
Yeah.
On efficiency.
All right, so that is the treasures report. And we'll go to the line green tab there. And I'll kind of turn it over to you, Hannah, on explanation to click on that.
And this is one that I would like a motion and authorization on. So what this is, is KLPD has a terms and conditions that is approved by the Public Utilities Commission. And this is. So we have statutes, regulations and terms and conditions are the main governing. Documents from from state agencies. So this, the terms and conditions we draft, but then we submit it to the PUC for approval. And it deals with operational issues. Some of it is covered by statute regulation. Some of it is is not consistent with that. So with the business hours here in section 1.01 in paragraph A. We used to list our office hours Monday through Friday, eight to five. We are not required by statute to list our office hours. So my preference would be to have to have this language removed. And I see the red line version got got put in your packet. So you can see the deleted text off in the margin on the right. And this will give me flexibility to close the office if you need to for storms or other emergency situations. But also I am proposing that we modify our business hours that were open to the public from nine to four instead of eight to five. And the primary driver for that is time with our customer service staff to be able to do training. Some of their administrative work and we're also gearing up for implementation of our software. So having some time during the day to work on that without interruption would be desirable. We'll still have the same working hours for employees and still be responding to outages during that time as you did. But we'll, we won't answer a phone or open the lobby until until nine o'clock and we'll close the lobby and we'll transfer to after hours.
Like that matches, there's a lot of different hours with it's town hall, whether it's security department, whether it's the water department. But I think this is a good consistent one. We're here now. So I think that's a good move to help the staff that way.
Thank you. So in order for me to affect that change, I have to modify this page in our terms and conditions. Not before I can do that. And one of our governing documents, it's either the charter, the bylaws requires trustees approval for the terms and conditions.
Well, I'll make a motion then, move to authorize the general manager to remove reference of office hours in the KLPD's terms and conditions.
Second. Another question. Question on the effective date, why is it so far?
To give time for me to notice to our customers that we're changing then our after hours on call that we're changing. And we have some materials that were modified that hours that are already printed. So just to give us a month to make sure we have.
Nothing to do with the PUC. What for us to catch up?
A little bit, time for them to be able to see the application and process it before we affect the change.
So to be honest, fourth, we will need to change.
Yes.
Lobby hours.
Unless the PUC tells me otherwise, but I'm not anticipating a prescription.
So we have a motion in court. All in favor, say aye. Carries for disheaval for those who are in attendance here. Then we'll move down to. See over there. Number eight, it's payment authorization greater than 20,000. And I'll let you go ahead and do a little bit on that side of things.
Yes, and I apologize, but I did forget one piece of paper that I needed with my notes for the the size of the unit. So I will be, I'll grab that.
Well, we can say we're a trip. It's about this big.
As we're looking at HVAC system here, she's giving you details. No, this is.
There's no handout for this.
Will you be profiting in student? Yep. Two LLCs, one for a cottage that my parents done, but I was five. Or two acre lot. And then jointly owned with cousins, the rest of the property, which is the end of a peninsula. So 500 acres, about three miles of course.
Oh, my, my.
We are the biggest taxpayer of the country. Well, I convinced the group once I got involved, you could mostly did the tree growth.
Oh, there you go.
Get the taxes down. But then they turned around and, you know, they up the bill rates and that's because of tree growth works to a point.
What's the caution to get it out of tree growth?
Oh. Yeah, so I I explained that all to everybody, say, anybody has any intention of wanting to build on the property in the next 10 years. You ought, we ought to keep it out. Or, you know, but and but if you don't intend to build for 10 years or longer, then it makes more sense to quit it in the tree growth and pay the penalty. And penalties.
Doesn't want to house lots of things to do then, right?
Yeah, well. The sister up there, well, they just, she's gone. But it's always been a flat $200,000.
Okay, this is, this is.
We're talking Washington County. Nobody challenges it. Well, I I did, I looked, I talked to a Fraser out of Elsinore. And he said, you could challenge this, but you spend more money with me. And then in the end, it's a county thing that where it's not the local, so I go to the county. And he said, you're not likely to win. I said, okay, thanks for saving me $5,000.
Do you have a board of supervisors required by state law?
So and we are.
Boarded, so.
So with the HVAC unit, we currently have only an air cooler on the roof. It's over 20 years old. So the heat that we have is space heaters, electric space heaters. In the each of the rooms, that's fine. So. Would like to replace the existing cooling system with a. Seven and a half ton roof top unit with 36 kilowatt electric heat package and cooler. So we would have both. A heater and.
No.
No, it's not.
So I guess the obvious question is, why aren't we looking at E-Pumps?
I can, if you would like me to, but this was the recommendation for the most effective way to heat and cool the building. If we want to look at a greener or environmentally friendly option for the building. We can do this. The quote that I had is from our existing provider, which is Triple A Energy Services. We did ask about heat pump program to see if that would work for us. And we. We were told that. I believe the heat pump program is ended for commercial buildings is the issue there. So there's no more support for heat pump installations from efficiency main for for the R and D. So it's a. So. That is a policy call. I look at replacing what we had with a similar unit. I did not look at. Heat pumps, you know, and we're looking to their efficiency.
So that plans is sort of good.
Yeah, I did.
I don't have any condition with that. I just had. I did that with my house and E-Pumps, but I also had that one. Let's see, the CLP, the CLP on here, you're recording yours, one to one. The heat pump you're looking at, a CLP with. The question is whether you can get enough heat pumps to produce that seven and a half tons of cooler, which. Given the flat roof and given the polyometric space on back, it's. Well, I thought it was interesting. I read where the town got a grant and the waterhouse had to put solar panels. I was wondering, and that would shift. I'm like, could we go after it? We have to get some of those.
Thank you.
Which would offset the upper deposit of this heating system.
Well, I will tell you right now, I do not have the feeling of pursuing an additional advance at this point in time. So. That's also in the timing. But I do recognize that this is 20 to 25, the position that. Or longer potentially for the unit that that we were installed.
They don't last that long, do you? Old school. Yeah, yeah, okay. From what they did 20 years ago. I have yet to see anything that's built today that lasts like what was built yesterday.
So like quickly, does Triple A do E-Pumps?
They do.
It's too bad. Said to go after efficiency, maybe they'll pay for it.
Retrofit incentives are for the replacement of existing equipment that's less than 16 years old. So that's probably disqualified for. Commercial.
We really don't.
Or we really don't.
Could be 16. Well. And. So efficiency main, a new one they think is the heart of the rest of it, can they also take out non-profits? Have to look back into that. Because we're disqualified.
How many electric heaters do we have out in the shop and in here? Oh, not. Everywhere. Plus the big heaters out in the shop, those are all electric too.
We have electric. We don't have any gas heaters up there.
Well, I ask Anna, what is your feeling, where you're at, and would you be proposing to implement this? Or you guys want to? Move in a different direction, but how soon, what's Triple A going to be able to do to work?
I don't know. I don't know if Triple A, that was, I'm going back to work because. Bob had asked about nonprofit opportunities. I don't believe they distinguish between nonprofit. It's just commercial or residential for heat pumps. I mean, Triple A. And I apologize for.
Any hard questions, no need for him.
I I would have to check into Triple A to see if they do E-Pumps. Because we got folks and did the work a few, a couple of months ago and I did look into the grant program and then thought. It's not something that's available to us. So I pursued the replacement of our, our unit.
So what's in the board, what direction?
I, I'm not going to make a motion, but I would like to put it off and pull a decent July meeting to have more time to study it and find out if. What options might be available, whether it's heat pumps or whether it's now solar roof or whether it's grants or whether it's. Energy audit to tighten tighten this place up. And there's a lot of options out there before we get to simply. Simply replacing what we have now.
Could you assist me in gathering some of that information if you could put it off? Go put on.
I can, I can, yeah. I have time. I don't know if you have time. I like what you just wanted. You want a summary when we're done.
For for what you would direct me to do as a group. But I do, you know, I'm balancing a lot of other important projects. If I add this to my plate, something else has to has to fall off.
It's a digital.
Yeah.
So I think that we're on, we're on the platter side, but down the place.
The efficiency main website still shows commercial rebates. Commercial rebates for E-Pumps. Rebates for. Main ventilation and air conditioning. Under commercial and industrial incentives.
Yeah, and that was what I just read of retro place up. This one was in 16 years old. There's new construction, there's.
So it's, you said this system is, as long as it's 16 or no older than 16?
There's new construction, early retirement. Less than 22 years old, early retirement incentives. For the, I said over 20, I think it was closer to 25. Then the retrofit incentives are for 16, less than 16 years old. You know, part of it is. And again, going from memory, the cost benefit analysis of how many heat pumps. It was the advice of the technician that the cost of. Heat pumps to do what we need exceeds the cost of the units out there that they're proposing. Because we know it's based on.
Short term, or maybe not life cycle. How do we, how do we pay for our electricity now? We have a separate account now, right? We just have, we just have, we just require it right now.
We've, we've always, we've always tracked it. So we do.
Always sent you back.
Thanks. So we know, you know, we know obviously how much, how much we use each month.
But it's part of our operating stuff, but we don't pay ourselves or ultimately is paid for by our customers. Part of our issue is timing. And we've waited until. Part of our issue is timing and then we break it until we have a right for a unit as well. We should be listed that.
Yes, we have. You brought a lot of them up to date.
So I am, I'll just add, I am comfortable with the proposal that I've brought. As the best economic decision. If the board wants to pursue a heat pump option, again, we can we can do that, but it's good.
Well, I'll make a motion. Decide what to do. I'm going to approve to go to Triple A for the purchase and installation of the HVAC system. System for thirty-five thousand for a seven and a half tons. That is for heating and cooling. Is there a second?
Hold on, I'll second.
Is there any further discussion before this we vote?
Well, my gut sense reading is that if there was any rebates available for efficiency name. It probably would be possible. So the other the other downside of heat pumps is that they shouldn't clean it. So should the.
And we service ours every year too, at the extent of the service.
It's the cooling, it's not the, yeah, it's because I haven't serviced one because. I tried to do it myself, but then if we did once, maybe a lot of money, then you see the health care comes out of your pants. But I don't have an issue with it. I always thought if there's money somewhere else, I'd give that. And we did a whole efficiency name, say yes or no.
Well, and we. You know, even the they have, even if we did qualify, which again, we looked into that. A thousand dollars per unit.
Well, it's a different hand for us, I mean, commercial and industrial.
No, this is. Commercial heating, types of project incentives. So for new construction, you get five hundred per unit for single zone, early retirement for even single zone, seven hundred retrofit, single zone, one thousand.
Yeah, you wouldn't do it. We already have a document system. So you just need to get the going into that document system. Yeah, it's an air handle. Yep. What the power unit is.
Well, then I'll call, there's a motion on it. And it's been seconded to authorize the for Triple A. Energy Service to purchase and install the HVAC system through up to thirty-five thousand for a seven and a half ton heat and cooling. Call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed.
Okay, we have three ayes and one opposed. Okay, motion carries. Then we'll go down to the next one, which is the purple tab. We will talk about a little bit and let Anna kind of touch base on a couple of those items.
Yes, definitely would now be a good time to add the agenda item for the for the grant.
Yeah, we'll go again and do that. Do you want to do that?
Please.
From down on, okay, we're gonna go down to the other business part here.
Well, this. Yeah, okay, sorry, my apologies. I forgot. I have an information item in other business associated with this grant and then after the. Agenda was published, I got I got a decision on this. So let's go through the other business items and we get to be the last for the.
For that. So you want to go down through those items, right? That's okay. Okay, all right.
So the first one there, a Department of Energy, Energy Invaders Fellowship Program. This has been around for a couple of years. I'm aware of another utility and. Our Power Association, the Northeastal Power Association also has one, so it's. I have experience with the program. It seems like it's working well. And they found a position basically for a project. So they're an employee of the program. They're not an employee of the utility. They're paid by the Department of Energy Grant. All the human resources is managed. My obligation is to mentor them in about one hour per week. And you know, it's, we get the benefit of somebody helping us with our project and they get the benefit of mentorship and experience on the job. So I think it works very well. The project that I've asked for help with is our Climate Action Plan is what the state is calling it, the feds. Prefer the terminology Energy Security Plan. I can call it what you will, but I intend to use this fellowship program. To satisfy the P U C requirement to have that report filed every three years. The first report was due at the end of twenty twenty-four. I had all the about three weeks to put that together. So hoping this time to have. A more robust process to to satisfy that statutory requirement. And, you know, it'll benefit us and let it's a combination of resilience planning, but also good planning, which.
What is the due date on that? I'm sorry, what is the due date on that?
It was twenty twenty-six, but it gave us an extension in the legislature this year after I got it filed for. The fellowship program. It's now due at the end of twenty twenty-seven.
Okay.
If I get it done early, great. That's better. And my hope is to also share some of the. As much as I can with some of the other consumer utilities in the state. We're the only ones that submitted for the Department of Energy Fellowship. So to the extent that our work here can can help them, I think that's a good contribution to to the industry as a whole. I will be meeting with the Public Utilities Commission next month on the seventeenth to talk about. This report and what they expect to see where. It's it's, I would say it's still somewhat in the development phase. The legislature handed down a requirement for the P U C to implement. It was a fairly short timeline for them to implement. So we're kind of working out the what do they want to see in the next report is what I expect to hear in July. Yeah, and they are working with some of the national labs to get data. I attended another climate workshop, climate action workshop that was put on by NEPA. They brought the, or NEPA helped facilitate it in New England. So they brought together the labs and the utilities. And what I what I learned is the labs are really putting out a lot of data and advice, but then it's on the utilities to. Interpret and analyze that data to make it relevant to their needs. And without analytical staff, it's really hard to make that that connection. So the. The fellowship program, I'm hoping will be very valuable and build on some of those models and estimates and plans for us. And so we'll be a little bit of my time every week. I have different three applications that I have to go through, which is very encouraging. Because some utilities or applicants got less than three. So the fact that we have such a good interest in the project is great. There's a good deal of it, so I'm excited about that. Any questions on the D O E fellowship program?
Thank you for embarking on effort there. I'm sure the state you have a real love to you for your guidance on some of that.
So the next one is the another grant. This is through the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation. So in late May, it was in May, I submitted a pre-proposal. Which you, it's a vetting process for them. So you submit a very short application. They look at your project and then they invite you to participate in the next round or they say no thanks. So we got invited to, just on Friday, I was notified that we got invited to participate in the program and submit a full proposal.
Is that a competitive grant?
Yes, it is. But just the fact that we made it through the first round is very encouraging. The dollar amount is a million dollars potentially, so it's less than the NOAA grant. And what we've done is just take a lot of the work that we did in NOAA application and. Tear that down to the million dollar amount. So.
But your challenge is how soon do you have to have it?
Yes, so my request to modify the agenda today is actually to get a motion on. And authorization to submit the full proposal to the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation. And that is to July seventeenth. So that's what I have to ask for the amendment today.
And I'll make a motion on it to authorize the G and to submit a full proposal to the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation. That's N F W F for its National Coastal Resilience Twenty Twenty-five Grant. It's up to a million dollars.
Point of clarification, I prefer the dollar amount not being listed in the motion. Just because if there's any flexibility and I can get more, I would put much of it. And there is not a, we're not proposing to provide any matching funds that may or may not affect our competitiveness, but. We're we're not proposing a matching process.
So I will repeat what my motion is then, to authorize the general manager to submit a full proposal to the National Fish. And Wildlife Foundation for its National Coastal Resilience Twenty Twenty-five Grant. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, how about then? Can you have any questions?
Purpose of the grant is?
Uh, to assess fish passage at the dams. And so this is another opportunity that came up after our NOAA grant application. The NOAA grant is still pending. So we're. We're taking advantage of an opportunity that presented itself and hopefully we're successful in one or more of those granted applications.
So they are coincidental and not mutually exclusive then? I would even get votes.
I I don't know that. I know a lot of.
Not saying they're not exclusive.
Correct, different organizations, but sometimes grants have limitations on other funding. So we have to look at.
So that, do we get to see if the company has asked for these applications?
I. I don't believe, no, I I did not share the NOAA grant application with you. You drafted the letter of support and stated your policy position. And then I drafted the application consistent with your policy position.
Is there a reason that we shouldn't be privy to that information?
It's, I have no problem sharing that with you. But I am a little bit concerned about putting it out publicly before NOAA gets a chance to. Gets a chance to decide the application because they keep the applications confidential until until they decide. So you, it's okay. I I don't mind sharing it with you, but I wasn't going to put it in my public packet to be sent to. To be distributed publicly while it's still pending at NOAA.
Strangely with the transparency and the confidentiality of being a trustee and authorizing things to be done. Without really seeing the meat of what we're authorizing. Not that I have any objections to going after grants, but if this was the town. We'd be seeing copies of these proposed grant applications for review and the selectmen would then say yes or no. Or a contract or a condition. Well, one's a million dollars weighing the other one's seventy-five. So one is replacing.
I think a little bit.
I like to read and understand what we're going after. That's that's my nature. I'm gonna be held accountable. I know you keep saying you're the one who's accountable, but I think if something happens to Boriana, then everybody else will be looking at me. Beverly, Bobby Bob, and Curtis. And man.
Well, we're accountable for different things.
Yeah.
The only thing that I I'll toss in the mix here is a little bit because these are competitive grants. Of other people within the state, and I I understand that. And that's, I think that's a little where. Like you said, the confidentiality to of it.
When I was a planner, I was writing rates and it was competitive, same. And this is before the state of Maine took over the Hudson. This was competing in New England. So each town had to do this. I was just going from what I used to do.
Not really the reasons I was saying that. It's kind of back and Anna's fought a little bit because of the competitiveness. Well, who is applying for in the state of which there are most?
I, but I see that other sides. So we're drifting. The difference between when I was involved in this guy, I was involved with the Economic Development Committee and the Development Corporation. We created a development corporation so that we could keep things confidential while the public's like. I don't know. I don't know why we can't. But the board had knowledge of what you're doing. The K P C board had knowledge. Yeah, so I have a question about the made that line. Did you say there was a made that line?
There was a pre-proposal.
Pre, okay.
For the made that line, which was a very low bar. Please describe your project. And apparently, you know, it was a two-page application, what what our objective was and what we're requesting.
In your language, you mean it was a twenty twenty-five grant as the motion I mentioned?
Yeah.
I, they do call it a twenty twenty-five grant, yes.
When is it going to be awarded then? Right, yeah, way through twenty twenty-five. They just say it's a twenty twenty-five grant. It's funded and then it will be awarded in some form in the future, not necessarily twenty twenty-five. Just a title.
Because he appeared it because they're just requesting.
Federal money that's been set aside and the doers didn't go after it yet. I don't know. So that's always kind of interesting from that. Yeah, I'm fully hundred percent supportive of whatever rates help. If you're ready to do fish passage, that's a win-win. They can help.
I think this is an effort on on that direction and I think I was just. Kind of see where Anna was coming back on on that a little bit because I know it is competitive out there and we are always looking for it. And so you always try to, if you have your edge.
And if I, this is a. Wayne, I I don't know the answer to why they put twenty twenty-five and whether that has to do with the funding and when it's in. Encumbered or when they're going to release the the funds. Right now, they're just telling us about deadlines, not necessarily. But on the transparency accountability, I recognize we're a public entity, government entity. But where I would like in twenty-six to have discussions, strategic planning discussions about. Potentially charter amendments. Our charter is extremely outdated. Our bylaws are very sparse. So in my opinion, the type of issues that you're raising on what you want to have. You know, approval authority over is something that we should look at holistically in the bylaws. And then I will get better direction on what it is the board wants and expects from you in that regard. But in like in the case of a NOAA application, I feel very confident that. And I understand that it's a level of trust, but I feel very confident getting the policy direction from you in the letter. And how carefully we worded that to reach consensus and what. Recognizing that we were also sending a message to the public, I carried that same level of fear and concern to the application. And so. That's one way to approach it. Another way to approach it is for me to make a draft and then, you know. How would we distribute that amongst us to get feedback? Would it be five people giving you feedback or would you do it as a board and the whole and have a work session and then give me feedback? So I'm not asking for an answer now. That's more rhetorical, but that is why I think. But that is why I think we need to do a strategic planning session to talk about the bylaws and how we can do that business sort of. So that's a little off, but I will get to respond to that.
So I've lost track of where you're at.
It's made and seconded.
It's made and seconded. All right, we'll go ahead and take a vote.
Aye.
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 So four in favor of the motion to submit the proposal for the Fish and Wildlife for the grant. We'll go on down to the next one on your first letter. And I believe that might be under that hook and tag.
So this first letter, I just wanted to provide you with the latest information and communication that I had from Perk on our application. Our surrender application for the dams. So they're essentially reciting history for the first couple of pages. Then they're, the very page two, second to last paragraph, they say within thirty days and must file for a water quality certificate. We know based on work, we have a strong D E P as. Strongly worded letters to us in the past that without fish passage, they would not, likely not approve a water quality certificate application from us. So the extent, I requested an extension of this thirty days because it passed on the twenty-first of six months. And that will give me time to do two things. One, hopefully get some feedback from either NOAA or the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation on grant opportunities. If we receive grants, then we will have to assess how we move forward. Know, we know if we can really try and address that before we get any grants in. The other thing that it will do, a six-month extension will allow me the time to work with an engineer to submit the water quality application. So I'm going to be doing, being somewhat in parallel, waiting for the NOAA grant. But at some point, because I don't want to spend money we don't have to or spend money that we have to change plans later. So there is going to be a point where I can't wait on NOAA anymore. And I'm either going to have to ask for another extension or I engage with the engineer and spend the money to fill out the water quality certificate application. And that will come likely end of September, first part of October.
But you got, also, you get your D E P about and giving you.
Yes, four minutes. And thank you for that reminder. I just got the letter right before coming into this meeting that they support our request for a hundred eighty-day extension. So that was.
The D E P's happy with that. Yeah, a hundred eighty days, that should make Perk satisfied.
Part of this, the E P C process require, well, does it rely? Does it only rely on state available data of the D O and L S? Or will, should we be budgeting something to do our own testing? Because it seems to me that is the hinge point on D E P and all of the correspondence on granting. All about what sort of heat wave like this, dissolved oxygen, or it was plummets because of the impoundments.
Their data is not for any testing that we did. The data is from the application.
Right, right. So.
Well, what that and that is that they have, but there is a lot of, some of their little test samples. And those have been passed on to Perk. And so that's where the question is. And to the state, I think some of that's where that question is. However, I will say this, there are other people, large companies, who have dams that even are operating. And they've been requested to do the water quality test. And they've been okayed to operate their dams. But it took them two years and they still haven't got it passed on a water quality certificate. So the challenge is to get the water quality certificate in the S. And so, like I said, are we going to make our individual investment?
I'm just indicating that the data that goes into the request. If we had a lot of turbulence in those rivers passing impoundments, we wouldn't have an issue. The question in my mind is, if we had tests done by a third party, I wouldn't take somebody just out of control. Said that themselves. That'd be a third party anyway. I would be testing the Kennebunk River along with the Mausel River to see how the two compare. Because they're both in our community, so they'd be having pretty much the same environment. It would be a good for somebody to study and do a thesis on.
But.
We don't have the time, we have to get it done.
I'm looking at funds and money and how much, if you do that, is that how the comparison to?
Yeah, well, eventually it would be.
Yes, it would be, it would be, so I understand. I think if we see if we can get the grants, and that's the big effort that we haven't pursued in the past. But you want, you want to test the water quality.
I'm just, this is the science part of it, saying if the D O in the Mausel is low. And the D O in the Kennebunk River is low. At the same time, we have an apples-to-apples comparison of one that's got dams.
And one that doesn't.
And one that doesn't. And has nothing to do with the dams creating that water quality issue that the D E P is saying is an issue. It's mother nature. And it would be, you know, for what do we cost to have that comparison? Because they're both within striking distance. We got a lab here in town, I don't know if they do that.
And a very good lab here in town.
But at this point, the D E P has sent us a letter saying that they support the extension of the grant.
Correct.
So we've got.
So as long as we've got the support from the person who is requesting it, I don't think that we're going to establish an extension based on that. That'll get it sometime.
And I guess I can interpret your question two ways, conceptually and whether, as a dam owner, we should be testing water quality. But I'm going to interpret it narrowly to, right now, should we be testing water quality? And I, my answer is no, because part of our work and studies that we plan to do would incorporate some water quality work. And that will play into the cost benefit analysis of the fish passage options and what some of those solutions are.
I see it both ways. If they could do the test reliably without any ready, all you would do is. If we had some anonymous donor who's going to pay for it, just to show, see what the numbers, because the numbers come back and it's dramatically different. It's going to be too big, it's going to be outside. But anyway, port of way, we know what we're going to place.
I think while we'll be outside people who have been testing the Mausel River, but have not been testing the Kennebunk.
It's not been testing dissolved oxygen.
No.
They've been testing a complete coastline, they've been testing both rivers. But the D E P has shown how to do this. And the numbers being low. And the question is, where did they test? Are they testing at the foot of the dam, midway down this stretch of the river, just above the impoundment? But we still have, we have a six-month window now where we can pursue the grant from NOAA. And that part of that grant from NOAA will include water quality testing.
Well, part of the, not necessarily testing, but when we're considering fish passage options, we need to identify any work necessary to address water quality issues, I'll say.
So we're waiting on both grants. We have, no, we're waiting on one and proposing to send everyone in by the seventeenth of July. All right. So that gives you an idea of one first letter and the backing. And that's where that the D E P, the D E P is backing our six months extension.
Then. I'll just also add that we do have the option to ask for further extensions. But I'm not going to consider that until we get closer to, around in a year, and I can assess what's needed.
Then, do you want to go on to letter B?
Yes.
And there's the other business.
Just more for your situation awareness, we talked about, so this, if we need to. Page four of the public cloud.
The blue stripe at the top?
Yes, this is the order from the Public Utilities Commission assessing the costs that we pass on to our customers on their behalf for efficiency main. So the price tag on that for a public impound is seven hundred ninety-eight thousand two hundred ninety-five dollars and seventeen cents. So I'm not sure, in the past, if you've been made aware of the, that, you know, what's required of our customers by efficiency main, that we need to be aware of the price tag. So we.
I don't think that number has been put back to the utilities until the last couple. Prior, maybe two years ago, it just came up that they are now asking the utilities to pay back these amounts. Now, I could be wrong on that.
I can speak to more than my time here, but.
This is where.
It's a pass through.
Well, I'd be happy to say that it's been, you know, a routine thing every year. But the amounts, you know, were three hundred, four hundred, five hundred, six hundred. It's a, it's a steady increase.
It's a steady increase.
And it's a big jump over last year. It's a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars more than last year.
But it's a pass through for us.
Sure.
Not to say the customers aren't affected.
That's true.
But my point is, if we collect it, we send it on.
That's who we collected from.
Right, right. Yes, that's where, yes, we pass them on. But it is a big number. Any other questions on that, comments? If not, we can move on.
I assume we're not appealing. You put in the page about how we can appeal.
You had it. Okay, we're not appealing, okay. Then.
You know, I will add that there is going to be upward pressure on efficiency main budget this year in the legislature. They approved a cabinet-level position for the governor's energy office, which signals some greater involvement in budgetary needs for projects that they're working on and investigating. That was disclosed in this, this year's budget.
All right. Otherwise, if there's nothing else, any comments on that? I'll go ahead and go down. Our next meeting, over on number ten, is, our next meeting is July twenty-nine. And then I'll check your calendars and make sure that seems sufficient and okay with everyone. So it'll be last Tuesday in July. Comments on it then? And I think if not, we're fine, July twenty-ninth. And is there a motion for adjournment?
Great, I have a question.
Yes.
Let's talk about the next one. August.
Okay, we can do that, we're going to talk about it in July.
Last day, I have a little to read. And so that, that Tuesday, I'm going to do a little something for him.
In August.
If we meet the last week of August.
In prior years, it has been that we have taken August off. I am, no, but I am one who believes that we've shoved too much then into September and October because we took August off. And so we can discuss it here if we take August off.
My counter to that is that you weren't here for the meeting last month, when Wayne and I were here. So we ran two agendas into one meeting and we've done it in just over an hour.
Yeah, okay.
So I hear you, but I don't.
Well, that's, that's okay, that's, that's.
I don't mind meeting if we can, if you want to move it up a week or.
No, like I said, if there's a conflict, I have no problem with it. However, Anna, was there some timing with that conflict?
I'm going to be out of town then. I will be out of town on the nineteenth.
I think it's always worked good to give everyone a break, including you.
Okay, all right. We can vote on it. No, it's all right, go ahead. We'll vote on it.
I'll do it here.
No, but we can.
Just said you're not going to be here the week before.
That's right.
And we normally don't meet in August.
We like to wait all right off that, that if we are going to meet in August or are we not? Somebody want to make a motion on it?
I'll make a motion that we do not meet in August.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we've been seconded. Any other comments? Take a vote. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Where should I say it? I have closed it too.
So it doesn't, it doesn't hear it. That I would move that we have our August meeting the first week of September, so that we don't lose our money. Or another day of the week. You're going the whole week. Well, I'm going to be gone the week, she's going to be gone the week before.
When's Labor Day, is that the first week of September?
Labor Day, November.
Yeah, but it would be Tuesday. And she's going to be here for kids are back in school.
Yeah. I'm agnostic, so second.
So I mean.
Did anybody else have any conflict on?
September second.
Did anybody else named Matt have any conflict on September second?
Also.
And if it comes in July, that doesn't seem to work out for our agendas, we can always not do that meeting. Do it in September, but we can.
I'm proposing, I'm making a motion that we meet on September second.
Okay.
And you will be the week before in August.
Okay, do I have a second? I'll second that, second that. September second. Take a vote on that.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye, aye, three, four, okay. Here's a unanimous there, there we go. All right, so we will have July.
Did you get August off?
So the dates are July twenty-ninth and September, and September second. And then we will still have a September meeting.
When I see those grants, and that'll make it happen.
Yes, it's going to make us all happy. Got a motion for adjournment?
So, second.
We've been seconded, all in favor say aye. Aye, that was Bob G and Bobby.